Five. So Dale is absent this evening and Michelle is on her way, but we're going to get started. So tonight, we're going to be taking up Public Works, which consists of the Highway Department, and Waste Water Department, the Water Department, the Watershed. Harbor, we're going to address tonight, Transfer Station. So we've got several budgets to work through, so I'll turn it right over to Reggie's going to go first this evening, I believe, right? Is that what we? Oh, that's right, he's doing his capital as well tonight, so. Well, I'll leave it up to you guys then to get someone on the podium and get this show on the road. All right. Mr. Wheaton, so Water Supply Protection, which is towards the back of this section. All right. Section 11. Water supply. One page. Perfect. John, the floor is yours.
Floor is mine. Hello, all. Hi, Michelle.
Hi, John.
If any of you folks don't know me, my name is John Wheaton. I work for the Water Department, and part of our job is to take care of the watershed that helps keep our drinking water cleaner. So as part of that, we try to keep things from away from getting in the water that weren't put in there by the glaciers 10,000 years ago. Part of those things are man-made substances and substances that people can bring with them when they visit our lake, because our lake is open to everyone in the world at no charge to visit. So as part of that protection, we inspect all boats at the Branch Lake State Park Boat Launch. And to that end, most of the budget you see here tonight is for operating our boat launch inspection process that consists of two different parts, our paid staff and our volunteers that we get through the main state park host system. We, the city built a host parking area slash camp area for RVs about 10 years ago at the state park, and part of that partnership with the state is we built the park for about 100K, and our investment pays us back as volunteer hosts come and help us out to inspect boats. So you'll see references to both pieces here, the paid staff and also some host savings, so to speak, as we talk about it. And you've had a chance to look at some of the numbers. The greatest chunk of it is our paid staff, and we have, I have budgeted for $15.50 per hour this year as our paid staff, starting July 1. It is hopefully close to being competitive to the fast food emporiums on High Street. It is not as high as some of they are advertising, but it's a little bit more than last year. And we hope it's enough to attract some qualified people to represent our city solo at the boat launch. They are protecting our water and also representing the city, so we want to try to attract as many responsible people as we can. If you have any other questions about some of the smaller items, I happily will entertain any of your questions.
Well, I, um, I had some concerned fishermen. They like to get out early, but that's not possible, right? Or?
Well, the boat launches open up according to the license that the city agreed to with the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. The city and the state set up the boat launch, be opened up at 5:30 a.m., starting in April, and we close it at 7:30 in the evening. And again, that is set up with IFNW and the city who agreed on that license, that 20-year license about January.
These people are saying that they get there, you know, 5:30 and wait until 7:00 until somebody shows up.
I, I hear the story that you're telling me, and I, if that ever occurs, I want you to, you have my phone number, I include it in all the, all the schedule, and I want you to call me at 5:30.
So you've heard that too, though?
Pardon me?
You've heard that too?
Oh, over the last 10 years, we've had a couple times where our folks have either not woken up in time or they've had car problems, and I usually get a call about 5:15 saying, from the, our police department, saying, "The gate's not open." And I groggily say, "Yes, I'll be right there and open it up."
Okay.
It happens occasionally, because people have a hard time not being human, and we try to cover it as best we can with either the police department or myself.
Agreed.
But as a rule, that's our schedule, and until we get, usually it takes a while to get the automatic electrically operated gate going, and when that's the case, it's open 24/7 until we have it mechanically operating.
Okay. That was my only question. I just had some people mention that to me and...
Oh, I, I hear the stories too, and sometimes they're accurate. And we always try to make people as happy as we can, nine times out of 10, that's the case, but I always, I always want to hear the stories that you hear, because we can, we can always improve on the situation if we know about it. So I thank you for sharing that.
Please, go right ahead, Tammy.
So I see in 2023 that we budgeted $11,350 for miscellaneous expense, but it was only 2,850 this year. Is there a reason why there was such a significant decrease?
Yes, we took it out of, took out of that because we had planned on, we have been planning for a few years on acquiring a more stable boat to do our work with. We took it out of operations this year because we have a capital expense that we've budgeted for a used pontoon boat. Remember when, I think I saw you on the lake last year?
Yeah.
We were on the, my pontoon boat doing the work, and you congratulated us on our new boat. We're not there yet.
Okay.
But, but the concept is, was good, and we, we hope to perhaps achieve that goal this year.
Okay, and that's in the capital budget?
Yes, you will see that in the capital budget.
I know there's some conservancy and other organizations, Branch Lake Association, right? That, is there an official partnership there, or is there like a quantifiable amount of in-kind service that those organizations provide?
We can quantify all of it that they provide, the Branch Pond Association, Branch Lake Association, depending on what you want to call it at any given time. They are partners because what they do is they have paid for all of the navigation buoys that the city has installed in the lake. It was partnership formed before I was here. They purchased the buoys because we had a boat, we installed them, and they have worked with us installing, taking out, repairing, putting back ever since. And it's a, it's a rotating cast of volunteers that helps out each year. I usually get several requests that say, "Hey, can I help?" And we always say yes, and we usually, we usually have a good time on the water. It's a beautiful day when we try to do that kind of work, so we have a good time on the water. But they, their value is, I would say, labor. Initially, it was money, and now it's labor. They have volunteered to purchase more sampling equipment and buoys in the future. Probably will be taking them up on it this year, because several of the buoys do get lost each year because of destruction. We don't take them out, and a few get lost every year through wind and the waves, so to speak.
John, do they still, like, do, they do loom counts and they still, don't they, do they still go around and look for milfoil and, and things like that and other items that they could notify you of, that could possibly be on the lake or things that are not good for the lake?
Yes, good and do, all the time, and that's a wonderful thing. There's hundreds of eyes out there. There are at least 30, they call them the Branch Lake Milfoil Rangers. They were the first big organized group in the state of Maine many decades ago that started looking for invasive species, primarily plants, because it's the easiest thing to see, and they're larger and bigger than microscopics, you can see them easier. Yes, they have, they've been active and stayed active. I'm a member as well, of course, and I check out a certain section of the lake, and the 29 other people check out other sections of the lake. We all pool our data at the end of the year, but usually if there's anything that people see that looks questionable, they give us a call, and we check it out as well and grab a sample and send it to the state if need be. We had some that we sent out to a local expert, a former DEP staffer who still lives in the area, and we had him check it out next year. Sometimes some of the species are really interesting and they have to be identified via DNA testing. The state does that and we send it there.
It's a great part, it always has been a great partnership with them. They really are great advocates for, for that lake for us, so.
And do you still have, I, are you remember having a boat out here in the parking lot and doing, um, testing, you know, like showing boat owners where to check for milfoil and training, that sort of thing? Do we still do that?
Yes, that's called self-inspector training. We've done less of, less of it face-to-face through the COVID thing.
Yeah.
But this year, we're all inoculated, and I've had it a few times, so I think we're, we're ready to go face-to-face again, and we've been doing that as well. The self-inspector process is involved because we have about, up to almost 50 private launches around the lake as well. We have the main public launch that we inspect boats at, but there are many, people can launch various places as well. With Airbnb being popular now, a lot of people turn on the boats from away, so we want as many neighborhood inspectors as we can, and we have quite a few, and these self-inspectors will inspect their neighbors' boats as well. And it's a, it's a wonderful partnership. Most people are pretty savvy about it nowadays. There aren't too many anglers that don't know about critters from away, whether they be invasive fish, invasive plants, invasive fish diseases from away, microscopic stuff, edinemo, if anybody's seen rock snot, as it's called. There's a lot of allergies that are, come from away that we don't really want in our water supply either. So, and, and like I say, the anglers are pretty savvy now. Most everybody's pretty, pretty well-versed. But there's always time to educate more and especially to keep the younger crowd knowledgeable as well. You'll, you'll get the invite, first class we have. Please.
How, how many boats were turned away last year? Do you have that data?
Turned away?
In other words, through the inspection process?
Yes.
Did you find, I mean?
We, we don't turn boats away, we have a pressure washer there, and if there's anything that's green that didn't come from the boat factory, we encourage the owner to pressure wash it away so that it is no longer on their boat. And what we do is we happily will pressure wash the boat or trailer if they don't wish to, but we encourage the owner to, because we really don't want to peel people's fancy decals away, but we want to peel away the green stuff that doesn't come from the boat factory. And we haven't turned away, but we did about 2,000 inspections, as we typically do. Last year was no exception. It was certainly didn't, during the COVID times, it didn't drop off the amount of boating pressure or interest, I should say. The state encouraged everybody to get out there because it was safe to get out in the middle of the water, away from others, to recreate, and people, people heeded that advice. And so we didn't turn anybody away, but we washed a few boats. We identified several boats with plants on them, and we cleaned them off, and they launched.
Silence is golden.
Bam.
Is that a yay?
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Have a great day.
Do you go, do you ever go back to the lodge?
Who's next?
It's a great lodge, isn't it?
Yeah, it is good. And that little, like, big area.
Waste Water Section 13 in your book.
Good evening, everybody. Mike Harris, South River Waste Water Superintendent. So for the budget this year, uh, we're looking at approximately a 4% decrease in the operations budget. Is, is there anything in particular that you guys would like me to go over, or do you want me to just go down through all the line items, or how do you want to play with
I would just go down through your line items, just highlight the ones that are significant change.
Okay.
Up or down? If there's no change, there's no need to really...
So payroll, initially it was 300,000, that bumped up to 315,000. I simply took the, went into munis, found the, um, weekly amount that we pay out for payroll, which is 6,000 and change, multiplied it by 52, and that's what it came out to. That doesn't include any increase in pay if there is one this year or anything like that. That's just what we're paying currently times 52 a week, times 52 a week. So those first three items are all, well, the first two items are basically the same. Third item, um, over time, I just, I bumped it up a little bit because we exceeded, uh, the last couple of years, so I just wanted to bring it more in line where we're, where we were at. On-call is just whatever the stipend is by the union contract multiplied out. Telephone is based on, the increase is based on the increase that we, we saw in the usage of the telephone cost. Power went down significantly, and power went down significantly because of the solar credits that we're receiving. And so that helps out tremendously. Water's the same, office supply's the same, dues and memberships the same, training expense went up because we have another employee, so instead of having four employees that need yearly training, we have five employees that need yearly training. Conferences and meetings went up a little bit, just based on the cost of travel and the cost of conferences and trainings, everything's gone up. Professional services, so professional services includes all of our annual contracts for, like, our SCADA maintenance, um, our contract with Neuros, which is our turbo blowers that run our aeration tanks, all of our VFTs, Rockwell Automation Services. So anything that's an annual, um, contract, and then if we have some engineering that needs to be done, legal services, all comes out of professional services. And so I just looked at the amount that we're paying now for the different yearly contracts and, and things like that, and adjusted accordingly. So our billing expense is not determined by me, it's what we pay as our portion for our billing through Amanda, but she does the water and sewer billing, so that helps pay for that. Licenses is the state licenses for the DEP that we have every year, and it just reflects, I looked at last year's what their license, our license, discharge license fees were for the DEP last year, and adjusted accordingly. Miscellaneous supplies, um, it was, I believe the 4,500 is in there, I think it was at 5,500, it's been at 5,500, no increase in that. Missland expense, no change. Vehicle maintenance changed because we have three vehicles instead of two, um, so I just bumped that up to cover vehicle maintenance on that. Building maintenance stayed the same, sewer line maintenance stayed the same, pump stations stayed the same. Search disposal, I kept the same, but I think actually may end up being significantly less. And the reason I say that is because we are now transporting, having our biosolids transported to Canada. Our previous vendor was charging us roughly $113 a ton to take care of our biosolids. Now, our contract to send it to Canada is significantly less. So what I simply did was I said, "Okay, during peak times, we can do up to 36 tons a week." So I multiplied that out by 52, and it came out to roughly $159,000. So I kept this at 150 because in the winter, we won't do 36, we won't do close to 36 tons a week. There are weeks we won't send any. But I don't know what's going to happen with governmental regulations, I don't know what's going to happen with Canada. There's some unknowns there, so I didn't want to try and knock that number down, because if something happens with our ability to ship it to Canada or some other unknown situation occurs, then I'd rather have too much than not. Vehicle insurance went up against the other vehicle, building and property maintenance went up, um, because they reevaluated the plant. Liability, same, information technology, the same, generator fuel's the same, gasoline went up because of the extra vehicle. Heat stayed the same, uniforms stayed the same, miners' tools and equipment stayed the same, laboratory supplies stayed the same, plant chemicals went up, uh, just based on last year's uses and the cost increases in hypochlorite, bisulfite, and polymer. All of them went up. And then everything after that is all debt service and stuff that I don't deal with.
I've heard this story before.
Yeah.
Hey, Mike, what is this Clean Water SRF 2 for 30,000? Is this a new, a new loan? Because it doesn't...
Clean Water SRF 2.
I just threw that 30,000 in there because we don't have an estimate on a payment for a ban.
Yeah, I don't have that on my sheet.
I think we took it off because we were going to talk to Ann about a more...
Oh, okay.
Correct number.
That's for Water Street Pump Station, so the debt that we're currently...
That line, Tammy, that, that debt is paid off. I just threw that number in there to, to not forget it later, but I think we're going to take it out because I think it's too high.
Okay.
Yeah, because that project's roughly 2 million, 2.2 or whatever.
So I think the annual payment's going to be probably half of that 30,000, not 30,000.
Is it a 30-year or 20-year?
I think 20.
It's not finalized yet, so.
Right, 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 okay.
And then as far as revenue goes, um...
We don't have a revenue.
I don't have a revenue, I was going to ask you.
Like, there's no...
It should be with this one, because it's a enterprise account.
It wouldn't be under review of revenue?
I looked in there, something.
Okay. All right, she had it. Do you want me to? So I put the user fees at 1,630,000. That includes a 2% increase in sewer fee. Also put the septic revenue at 450,000, which includes a 1 cent across-the-board increase per gallon. Miscellaneous revenue stayed the same, interest lien costs stayed the same. Sewer permits, I put 10,000. We didn't have any number for them for the last couple of years, but I know we have the 71 unit coming for Jonathan Bates. I know that we, which actually will probably come in this budget year, I thought it was going to be next budget year, but Jackson Labs doing more work up there, so they're going to be giving us some, some money. We have the 116 unit coming to plant, coming to TRT, I think next month, that's looking to go up behind the Bowlin Alley. And so I know we're going to have money for sewer permits. I just don't know how much that's going to be yet. So I put 10,000 in there as a placeholder, so I didn't want to overestimate it, but I wanted to capture something in that. Why? Yeah, so, so you can see, we've been estimating 1.6, I don't know where it came up for that last year, but we were estimating 1.6 all along, but we weren't making it. But this down here are numbers I put together this year for what I project that we're going to do in 2023. So I projected 2023, at the end of this physical year, we'll have brought in about 1.57. And then for next year, I added 2%, and then I added a little bit more because we have those big projects that are coming, and so I expect that we're going to get a little more revenue from that. This 450,000, this number last year was something that I talked to Josh about, but he did not calculate that up correctly. So this number here is, I took what we've done so far, projected out what I think we're going to do for the rest of the year. And print. And so that's why I put that at 450,000, I think that's more realistic.
We just didn't get the bottom part that he has.
That meter sales piece.
If you change it to land use instead of portrait.
No, you won't, I didn't. If you just print selection, it'll do it. Do you have the capital? I know we're not doing capital tonight, I just...
My...
Can you take, because there's no detail in this either? Can you tell us what's in the, what you, I know you said it, but I couldn't hear everything. The professional services?
So the professional services is we have a SCADA contract with, we're in current, we have a service contract with Neuros APG, which is the turbo blowers that our aeration tanks feed the air to our aeration tank, our aeration tanks.
Yeah.
Um, we've had two of those, we did that, we entered into that agreement because we've had two of those blowers fail in the year since we opened. One of them they covered, one of them they didn't, it was like 30 grand. I can't remember the total cost of it, but it was a lot. All of the VFDs are in that. The generator maintenance for all the pump stations, annual generator maintenance. And then there's some, you know, in there for if we have any unexpected legal or some other professional service that we need to...
Miscellaneous services? Because it went up $5,000, I just was wondering why, and it's tripled since '20.
But the, so the Neuros APG is 27,000 a year. The contract for the VFD, VFD and motor control centers is 1238 a month, whatever that turns out to be. SCADA contract with, we're in occurrence, 500 a month, and then it's 1750 if they actually have to come on site. The generator contract isn't a set amount, it's per, it's so much per, if it's a small generator, it's not as much money, if it's a bigger generator, it's more money.
That's okay, I just was wondering if you were expecting a, another project or something that you were increasing the professional services for?
No. No.
It's a just-in-case, you need a type thing.
The cost of the audit also comes out of there. Outside lab analysis also comes out of there, so we have to do wet ethyl toxicity testing. So that's, that's the stuff that comes out of there.
That's okay, thank you.
Is there a contingency for if Canada regulates?
Nope. I mean, I'm not trying to be facetious, I just, apparently where we're at right now with that is, so LD 1911 passed last year, which basically banned composting in the state of Maine or any land application in the state of Maine. And the thought process behind 1911 was that the legislature wanted all of us to bring it to landfill. The problem is, the landfills have a license also, and it doesn't allow them to take that much. One. Two, you can't just put it in the landfill, you have to mix it with other materials because it shrinks over time and it creates a void in the landfill, and it will cusp cave in. So what you, we run into is, so Maine Organics no longer composts anything, they're out of the picture now. The Juniper Ridge landfill just shut down, rural Bangor, Orno, all of them got kicked out of that landfill up there. So there's a scramble, trying to figure out what to do. There's another landfill in Heartland that just opened a new cell that is trying to get people to come there, which we looked into. The only issue you run into with that is, one, they start at $130 a ton without trucking, so you would have to pay for trucking, and the $130 a ton, and for every container of biosolids that you want to bring to them, you have to bring two containers of demolition debris or trash or whatever for them to be able to mix it with, because they don't have a contract for C and D. And so it's prohibitive. And so when we looked at how much it was... Um, and so when you, we looked at how much it would cost to do that. You would probably be talking somewhere in the range of two hundred and sixty thousand a year for us to bring it to Heartland. And we're paying, um. I don't want to say it on public television because it's a private contract we have, so we're paying significantly less, lower amount, going direct to Canada. No, it's mine. I turned it down, it's not enough. So, I mean, and so as far as alternatives go, there really is none right now, um, I've. I had a conversation with a representative from the legislature who wants me to go down and testify in front of the legislature. So I said I'd be happy to do that, um, so I think it's going to be me, Bangor Superintendent, um, and some other stakeholders. He wants us to go down and, because we, they had a hearing with Casella, who runs the Juniper Ridge landfill and is the major player in the state. But for some reason, they wouldn't allow municipal entities to speak at that hearing. And he objected to that, and so now he's trying to put together a hearing where the municipalities can voice their concerns over what's going on. Because it's, it's going to be a critical issue here. It, it is right now and it's getting, going to get a lot worse because. What most people don't understand is, they shut the municipal solids down, but they let the septic sites stay open for the, this whole year. To figure out how they're going to handle that. Well, the way they want to handle that is they want to tell them that they can't land apply, they have to come to a facility like ours. There's eight hundred and something of them in this state. If you shut them down and tell them they have to come to someplace like us. It's going to be a catastrophe, because first of all, we can't take it. We wouldn't be able to take as much as they want us to take. Without upgrading our centrifuge, you know, we pay guys overtime in the summertime to keep up with what's coming in now. So I already know two sites, more septic and froseptic, they would overwhelm us literally by themselves. So you're, you're pushing to take this stuff to us and for us to be able to dispose of it, but, one, are a lot of, we're the biggest up here. We're the biggest in northern Maine. So for us, we're licensed for ten million gallons a year. We do maybe six million gallons a year, five to six million gallons a year. For us to be able to take ten million gallons a year, we're going to have to, it was going to have to involve a capital project to do a, increase our centrifuge capacity because that's the sticking point. We can only put a maximum of ninety gallons a minute through our centrifuge. So, I mean, we're limited and we only, you know, only set up to operate eight hours a day. We're an eight-hour facility, we're not a twenty-four hour facility, so, you know, when we have to run extra, we pay guys overtime. So it's, it's a, it's at a critical mass right now and I'm not sure what the legislature's going to do. We're the only state in the country that doesn't allow composting. That's not to say that other states aren't going to follow suit, because I just read an article about Deer Island, which is off the coast of Boston. They take three hundred and thirty million gallons sewer a day, and, uh, now they're starting to get worried about what they're going to do because their stuff goes to twenty different states. So. So, like, I don't know what's going to happen if Canada shuts down. That's, I've tried to figure out an easy solution there is online. So. It's a major stressor for us. Yes, sir.
This secret number that you don't want to say, it's something you could provide us?
Yeah, I'll write it down and put it in front of you.
Well, isn't it the number that's in the budget?
I don't know, he said it's a secret number.
You mean the total number?
The sledge disposal and composting number?
Yeah, that's, this is what it is per ton.
I don't think that matters. Do you want to know what it is per ton or the total amount?
Oh.
To go to Canada. So to go to Heartland, it was a hundred and thirty plus trucking. Plus two containers of C and D.
This includes trucking?
That's the whole nine.
You mentioned that you increased revenue by one cent across the board.
For septic, yeah, because we increased it last year.
Okay, that's incoming that you're taking from other towns, okay. So what is it that you're charging now and what is it that you're going to charge, um, on the first of July?
So we charge five cents a gallon for what's called mixed liquor that comes from other wastewater plants. Um, we charge seven cents a gallon, or eight cents a gallon for, so, I'm sorry, six and eight and then eleven cents for grease, so everything would go up a penny.
So Mike, just for the public to know, what is considered mixed liquor versus?
So mixed liquor is, so every wastewater plant generates sludge. A lot of treatment plants don't have the capability of de-watering it and getting rid of it, so they send it to another plant, which is us. So Southwest Harbor, um, Mount Desert Island, Winter Harbor, Blue Hill, Machias. All of them send their waste sludge to us to be processed and we charge them and then we process it.
What was the next step after mixed?
Septage, which is just people's septic tank that gets pumped.
What was that cost? Oh, revenue?
I believe it, what, it was a revenue?
What is your charge?
Oh, eight cents, I believe it's, is a gallon right now.
Eight cents, so it's going to be nine?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you rattled on about something else.
So grease is a, we don't get a lot of, but it's a harder constituent for us to treat, so we charge, um, I believe eleven cents a gallon in that for grease.
And that'll be going up to twelve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And every contractor pays the same? There's no special treatment or anything?
Yeah, so no, that's not correct. If you guarantee a million, then you get a, you pay the, um, mixed liquor rate.
So not all septic is eight cents?
No.
These are contracts that we have with the other.
There's no contracts.
There's no contract.
Just people come, we set them up an account.
Some people are paying five cents.
One person's paying that and the rest are paying the other because he guarantees the million. He's the biggest round.
And? It costs you less to process his septic as opposed to the others?
Nope. It's the same. That was an arrangement that I was came up with when we opened the plant to try and attract users, because we, we originally created this as a revenue stream.
It didn't work?
Oh yeah, it did.
It's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it doesn't cost, so the cost analysis at the time.
Was four cents a gallon.
It's four cents a gallon.
To break even. And where it's even less now, because when we did that, Michelle, that was going through the whole plant. Now we don't even go through the whole plant. It goes into one tank, gets de-watered and shipped.
Every financial I've seen has lost money.
It's all because of depreciation, we've had that conversation. Like last year, we were plus four hundred thousand, then the depreciation was added and we were minus four hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dollar depreciation.
Depreciation is a cost, it may not be a cash cost, but if depreciation wasn't real, your plant will never wear out.
No, but depreciation is not something that you would fund through your, your operations budget, or your rates would be untenable. We would never replace the treatment plant with our own operations budget. We would go out, just like we always do for big projects and ask for grant money. Work with, uh, the DEP, the feds to get loans, loan forgiveness grants. We would never say, we're going to spend twenty-four million dollars of City of Ellsworth money to build a wastewater treatment plant. That's what grants and loans and that stuff are for.
It's also, if I may.
Have at it.
So in depreciation, it, it is a number that is required by the enterprise and because of GFOA. But it is not a real number and a real cost to the taxpayers of the City of Ellsworth because we do budget for maintenance and we do budget for capital improvements. Which is what the depreciation is supposed to cover. It's a number that is created because of a financial requirement, financial reporting requirement, but it should not. Be charged to the, to the users or the taxpayers of the City of Ellsworth because it's an unfair, it's, it's not a real cost.
And we have thirty-five thousand dollar reserve every year typically.
That's not what the accountant said when I asked that question.
Because that's, that's, but that's not cash accounting, that's more, that's GFOA required accounting and it's, it's an across the board.
It's not what I, that's not what the statement says and that's not what the accountant said at the finance, come here.
Well, I don't know what else to tell you, I mean.
Well, you don't have to tell me anything.
Done it for twenty-five years and, I mean, and it's a true, if we had to charge an extra eight hundred thousand dollars to the taxpayers and the users of the City of Ellsworth. For a, a number that's required by reporting, it would be, you, you couldn't afford to do that to them.
And we're not, we're going to trade in the treatment plant.
Exactly, and we don't, we're not a tax entity.
I'm not suggesting anyone charges more. I'm concerned and I have been concerned about this extra sewer that we take in. We're not charging the right number to help the users of the city. That's my concern. And Mike, and it's been an ongoing concern and an ongoing battle and.
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying as far as the loss goes, but I guess my question to you, Steve, would be, if you look at that revenue budget in front of you. And you take that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of it, where is my budget now?
Well, we don't know if the four fifty is helping. I've said before, just because the restaurant parking lot is full, doesn't make it profitable.
But we do know because we did a cost analysis.
I, I don't think you do know, otherwise you wouldn't be losing money.
We're not losing money. If you look at your budget, we're not losing money.
That's a budget, I'm looking at the real numbers that the accountants come up with. Um, you can put any number in a budget you want, and I'm telling you, the reports that I see that you're paying the accountants to do, you're losing money. Otherwise.
Yes, but what you're failing to recognize still is that the reason we're losing money is depreciation. Depreciation is not something that you budget for. Depreciation has nothing to do with septic. Depreciation, if you took that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars away, you'd still have to take the eight hundred thousand dollars in depreciation off.
I'm not saying take it away, I'm saying that we may not be charging the right number. That's my thing. And, and if that's the case, I don't want to see the guy that's got the personal septic system and the personal well paying the guy's bill. And I don't want to pay for the other town, let the other town pay for it.
That's why they're paying us.
But we don't know that it's the right number. One further question, I mean, we've battled since I've been on this council.
I know.
And, um, we don't seem to get any, but one thing I would like to say is that the first financials I saw. And I'm rounding numbers here, was four hundred and sixty thousand dollar loss. I think it was from twenty twenty and depreciation was only three hundred. And again, I would like to state that depreciation is a real cost, if not a cash cost. My final question is this. Vehicle use. How many people in your department are taking vehicle home for personal use?
Me.
So that's one.
That's it.
So Mike, um, have you done a comparison to other?
Yep.
Municipalities that take in the septic?
Yeah, I mean Brewer's the next biggest one and we're about the same. They're seven cents, I believe.
You're already at seven percent?
Seven cents, I believe.
Okay.
I also just want to go on the record, because this question repeatedly gets asked by Council O'Halloran. There is not a single vehicle that leaves this city hall parking lot for personal use. Every single vehicle, there are vehicles who employees take to their residence. And that vehicle is used for transportation to and from their place of employment. It is not personal use. The vehicles are parked once they get home, they aren't used to go to the grocery store or take their children to school. Or do any other activities outside of transportation to and from work.
I'm simply asking the question, I'm not insinuating anything, but I'd like to know each department, how many people are taking personal vehicles home?
But when you pose the question as being used for personal use, that insinuates that the employees are using the vehicles for personal use. And that would, that would go far beyond transportation to and from work. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, that these vehicles are not being used for personal use, they're being used to, for transport to and from work. That's all.
That's personal use in my view.
No, it's not personal use, because I'm on call twenty-four hours a day, so I need that vehicle with me wherever I'm at.
I'm allowed my views, I don't have, you don't have to agree with me.
No, but I can state my view as well.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so we need to stop this and, and what's said is said, and there's no reason to insinuate that anybody does anything wrong. And thank you, Mike, for your explanation.
I'm not insinuating anybody did anything wrong.
Don't, no, we're not going there, Steve. So and for the public, um, just as far as depreciation is concerned, just one final thing. In the business world, in the taxable world, when a business purchases something, instead of putting the cost all at once onto their books. They use depreciation and they put the cost on over whatever years of the value. That's how the business world works. Municipalities run from a completely different set of books for cash, for one thing. And we don't have to pay taxes, so depreciation does not matter on our books, we're a cash organization. Now, the wastewater treatment plant, because it's an enterprise account, because of GFOA rules, which is governmental financial accounting rules. They have to show depreciation as a number on the books, but it is not a true loss. It is a, a booked loss, just like when you book, um, investments and you've got a market price and you get your actual value. There, it's a booked price, but it is not something you would ever charge the users or the City of Ellsworth taxpayers for. Because it is, it is a booked cost, it is not a real cost.
It's for accounting purposes.
It is for accounting purposes and that is it, it's for us to look at where the, the value of the plant is, whether we're keeping up the maintenance and things like that. But it is not a cost that we would ever, ever charge the residents or the users of the City of Ellsworth.
I'd say in the way it's charged for.
And so it's, doesn't mean, and it doesn't mean that it's, then it, that is not a loss, it's not a loss to the people of Ellsworth and it's, so.
The mixed liquor coming from other towns?
Yep.
Uh, the one cent increase, could it be increased more? Uh, would, you know, would there be pushback? Would it be?
I don't know, I mean, I mean, honestly, I don't know, I mean, we're, we've always been good partners with them and whenever we've increased our rates, they've never, you know, said too much back to us. I mean, they have to get rid of their stuff.
We, we increased them last year though, too.
That's what I'm saying, so, you know, I just, just like the City of Ellsworth is going through its struggles with everything going up and its cost increases. Other towns are too, and so, you know, I just try to be cognizant of the fact that whatever I raise, they're raised to, is going to get put on their town. And so if we, I think, I feel are making, uh, the profit that we want to make and we're getting fair market value for what we're doing. Then, then I'm happy with where we're at, and if we're not, if prices do increase, things happen that cost us to spend more money, then yes, like any business. Because that's how I try to run that, we would pass it along to the, um, consumer. So, I mean, if I were to go in our budget now and say, hey, we're going to go up five cents a year this year, which would be significant. I mean, if you take five cents times six million, you know, it's a pretty significant number. I don't know what I would get for pushback or not pushback, but. I wouldn't feel comfortable doing it because if I didn't think it was justified. If it was justified, of course, and that's, that's the way it goes. But if it wasn't justified, then, you know, it would, to me, it would just leave a bad taste in everybody's mouth. I don't want to do that.
The other thing is, if you, if you did it too much, you'd lose business.
Yeah, I mean, they could go to Brewer.
I mean, then that's profit loss too, there's a balance, there's a balance there.
And we have to maintain competitiveness in the market too. Um, but.
Yeah.
We have advantages that other places don't. Uh, that's why we do as much as we do.
That's fair.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
I would say like one more thing.
Sure.
To clarify, I feel that the City of Ellsworth has an opportunity to lower the user rates by accepting the other sewers from other towns that don't have plants. That's my point.
Okay, so that's a valid point. Uh, when I, I guess what I would say is. What I, I, I guess what I would say is if there's a plan that doesn't have, if there's a town that doesn't have any wastewater, then they would end up bringing it to us or Brewer anyway. But what we get from our towns is they have plants, they just can't take care of their solids. So we take care of the solids for them at a cost that they budget into their budget every year, just like we budget stuff in our budget. And so, um, we've always been, um, looking at where are we at taking in as far as revenue goes and how, how is that being offset by what we're spending? And, you know, as long as we're maintaining, um, a revenue stream that we feel comfortable with, that's been what's determined our rates. We could gouge customers and, because some of them would have no place else to go. I'd just choose not to.
Are we marketing, like going out and finding anybody?
No, because we can't take much more right now.
Right, okay.
So that's, that's also the limit?
I mean, we, we need to upgrade the centrifuge and we need to do it soon and, you know, we've got two big projects going on now that are in the pipeline. We're doing Water Street, that's kicking off, we're doing High Street right after it. And those are all funded. Um, and there may be some funding left over that we can move towards the centrifuge, but the centrifuge is going to be, become a critical issue because we're a regional supplier now. We're a regional, um, service provider for all these people. Um, and the state is pushing us to do more and I've told them we can't until we can upgrade. And I've told them they're going to have to come up with some money for us. And they will, that's what I'm telling, because that is what I'm being told. Um, they see the writing on the wall as well. But it's not a quick process. I mean, you know how everything goes as far as trying to, you know, apply and get it set up and get in the funding cycle and, and it just all takes time. My worry is that the, the, the hurricane is going to hit before the relief gets here. That's the problem that we're at because if they shut down the septic sites, it's, it's going to be bad, really bad.
So Mike, when we first built the plant, there was talks about having laboratory services in the plant.
Yeah.
Is that still on the, okay. Is there a reason?
Um, you'd have, I mean, we'd have to hire more people.
Okay, and that has a cost.
And that has a cost to it and I just don't think the revenue we would make. So basically, one of the revenue streams we looked at was being able to do a lab analysis for other plants and charge them. But when you look at how much we could charge them to do, say, copper analysis or cyanide analysis, these are things that are commonly done. And you bait, you say, okay, how many a year do you think we would be able to process? And you put that against how much it would cost to hire somebody else. It's not, it's not a significant revenue stream anymore. At the time, we didn't know that septicage was going to explode and it was going to become as big as it has and, you know, it, it's considerable, uh, considerable added labor. And so, yeah, the, the laboratory thing has been set, put on the back burner. Because I'm not sure that it would be worth the effort we would put in. So, that's what happened with that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Have a, have a good night.
Thanks for the work you do.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Lisa wants to go to the harbor next, so that's in section ten and it's the last two pages in section ten. And you should have new ones if you came in late and I didn't get you. I have updated numbers.
I didn't get yours. Sorry. Thank you, sorry about that.
Did you?
Good evening, councilors. Adam from the Harb, doing the harbor budget. Uh, it's up nine percent. The increases are the labor miscellaneous, which is we rent a lift for the artwork and we take, we pay for lawn treatment out of that budget now. Building repairs are up and that's primarily because of the bathhouse cleaning. We hire that out.
So Adam, was this approved by the Harbor Commission?
Yes.
This was their budget that they proposed?
Well, Lisa and I went and, you know, they agreed to it, yes.
Yeah, so, right. And provide a feedback.
Yes.
Yeah, why is the payroll kind of...
Sorry, I'm poking in. The Harbor Commission, yes, they have seen this budget. There is some minor changes because we got the co, the real cost of the lawn treatments and the bathhouse cleanings and stuff that you guys approved last month at the council meeting, so it's been updated for that.
Okay.
And, and you're having a full-time person this year, is that why it's two thousand eighty instead of?
Nope, so we, the harbor master has to be possessed, appointed for a one-year term and we need, we need somebody in the winter time. So I will stay on as the harbor master on file. Mike, the deputy, excuse me, will take on a lot more roles and be a lot more active down there. Slip assignments, docks, moorings. And I will be primarily hands-on in the winter only.
Okay. So your payroll is split between the highway department and?
Yes.
Okay.
That's just his stipend.
His stipend.
Stipend, okay.
The full-time payroll line is the harbor master's stipend for Adam and, uh, part-time payroll is for the chief, part-time is deputies down at the harbor.
Is that just a flat rate?
Yes, but no, it's hourly.
It is hourly?
Yeah. Is there any revenue?
It's in the septic water.
It's in the front.
It's in the front on the section three.
Section three is your revenue.
So the fifty thousand dollars in gas revenue was the net?
Stand by.
As if not, then if that's not net, then you have an expense line item for the...
And we have an expense line item. I believe it was closer to twenty thousand this year.
But it's not in this part, it's not in this?
Gas revenue. She's asking how much the total was. She wants an expense line item too.
There, there, no, I mean, we make revenue on the gas. I have no idea where they came up with the number. I wasn't part of that, honestly.
Okay.
But yes, we're making revenue on the gas.
So the revenue line should be, the, the harbor gas revenue, it's either fifty thousand that you bring in and then your expense for purchasing it is in your budget or your revenue is your net?
I think it was net, but I can double check.
I don't know, honestly.
That just seems high.
I know on the budget, you know, when I look at a year...
Really high.
On a year-to-date budget report, we have the minus and the plus and it's, I think, like she said, I think it's closer to like twenty-five or thirty thousand, but I don't know that.
I think putting the true revenue in on here, but you need to add your expense to your budget and that offsets it. So it doesn't...
Do it that way if that's what you want.
It's, yeah, it's really the better way. Your expenses are here and your revenue is here, so.
Yeah. We haven't done it any different than this in the past, so.
It wasn't part of the budget before. We just netted it out at the end of the year. It would, we'd just move it over to revenue.
Got it, but where they're putting it, revenue here, we need to put the expense part there.
Either budget for both sides or don't budget for all.
Right.
So that's basically.
So this fifty thousand bucks, to quantify that, how many gallons you pump? Do you, do you have an, is that easier to ask you how many gallons you pump or not?
Can I give back to you?
No, no, big deal.
I think it's good to have people know that...
I, I have and it's in the harbor monthly report. You know, we put it in every month.
How many gallons were sold last year?
You're like, like five thousand.
Give him the city a lot of money.
It's closer to the twenty-five thousand.
Five thousand gallons, right?
Oh, okay, so maybe I'm totally wrong.
Yeah, that'd be good.
You can just get back to us.
I, I will.
I don't need to know. I, I just was trying to come up with a number and in, in this, everyone's talking about revenues and expenses, there must be inventory of, of fuel somewhere.
Right, yeah.
Cost of goods sold somewhere.
Yeah, it's, um, they give it to the Harbor Commission for the monthly report. I just think you got missed on this.
When you came, Steve, when you got that report to the harbor meeting, it was in there every month and when I, when I send you a report, it's, it's in there.
Right, right. But you don't carry an inventory of fuel in your butt?
No.
It looks like, it looks like because of this.
The new food establishment there that responded for the bidding request that we approved two, two months ago, is that, will that show up as rent revenue for the harbor?
Yeah, it's, it's in property.
I see. And there are expenses associated?
No.
With that?
Nope.
Yeah, oh, there it is, it's two thousand dollars.
It's obvious that it's a polite, sorry. It's obvious it's a polite increase compared to others.
Yes, you know, it's nine percent sounds like a lot, but it being a small budget, it really isn't, yeah.
It's a polite number.
I had a question you forgot.
I'm sorry.
I will say it looks really good down there and I love the artwork.
Beautiful, you know.
Really is great.
And that was part of the increase is we have to rent a man lift every year to put that up and take it down.
And I can't remember the gentleman's name that's your assistant harbor master, but he's great.
Mike.
Mike, he does a great job down there.
He's phenomenal, yeah.
The fifty-four is your revenue and then the last one is your expense.
Right, so we've spent fifty-one, we've made fifty-four, but we're sitting on...
Six thousand gallons.
No, we don't have, well, three thousand gallons. So three thousand times four to five dollars a gallon, fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah. Which would make your statement look better, is my point. I realize I'm in the private mind here, but, um, if you had a cost of goods sold, which we don't have in government, certainly it would be inventory.
Yeah.
Do we fill up at the end of the year?
You got those changes that we need?
No, we do not, no.
Oh, okay. You just whatever's left.
The revenue?
Revenue with the...
We keep at least a thousand gallons in there because we have to have a two thousand gallon order each time where it's a small load. So we have to order two thousand. So we run it down till it's about a thousand and then order two.
It's a three thousand gallon?
Yeah, dual, three thousand diesel, three thousand gas.
How was the diesel sale?
It's slower than I expected, but I think that's partly because of the channels still silted in. You know, I think once everything is opened up, that'll take off.
Bigger boats can come in.
Right. Thank you, Adam.
Thanks, Adam. And Lisa.
Okay, that's going to come up and do whichever one you want to do first. Want to do the garage, the public works, transportation?
Transfer station, then we'll discover if the highway or garage.
Yep, that works.
We're back in section eleven now?
Yes.
You say we're doing solid waste?
Yes, it's right kind of in the middle of, uh, section eleven.
You got it?
All right, so solid waste, unfortunately, you'll see a fairly significant increase. That is one hundred percent due to, or I guess ninety-five percent due to the fact that we have increased costs for municipal solid waste collection and transportation. We had both those contracts, um, we're up for renewal at this last fiscal year. We put them out to bid and we got very little responses and, um, we went with the responses we did get and now we have five-year contracts, um, with Casala for both the hauling and the MSW pickup. And to, to, this two thirty-eight number is to kind of lessen the hit on last year's budget where we hadn't budgeted for that much of an increase. They let us take a percentage of the increase and divide it over, um, like the next three years, so there wasn't such a huge, so there's some additional in, in that too. Um, other than that, everything's fairly close to being flat funded. Some additional equipment repairs just because we have some older pieces of equipment. That's about it, really.
I know I should know this, but my husband takes care of it. How much do we charge for stickers?
Three dollars.
Three dollars.
So there is a solid waste committee meeting coming up in the near future here and, uh, one of the things I think we should talk about potentially is, um, not necess, not raising the sticker price yet, but there is a price for people who weigh, um, weigh their trash versus buying stickers. And I think there's some room there to do an increase.
We were to the point where the city wasn't paying anything. It was self-supported, pretty close to being self-supported and now it's way up again.
This is just a hypothetical and not anything that I'm even asking to be looked into, but right now we have one person that works at the transfer station.
Two.
Two people?
Yep.
If we ever did stop the house pickup and everybody had to go to the transfer station, would that, in your opinion, and like you said, just off the top of your head, do you think, and we'd have to hire a lot more people, would we be able to, even that transfer station be able to handle that?
Honestly, it would, we would probably have to hire, I'm guessing, probably one more person. We kind of, I've hashed that through back and forth going, you know, either just full pickup or full transfer station. As it is in the summer, we're sending two cans a week. If we took all of the trash in the city, I would say we'd be sending a can a day. And so our hauling cost would go way up and it, it ends up sort of balancing each other out.
When they pick up, it never gets to the transfer station, right? It goes...
Right, it goes right to Perk, yep.
That's what I was wondering.
Yep.
Probably you should steal them from Peter to pay Paul and then you'd have a whole lot of irate citizens if they had to go to the transfer station, so.
No, I know, I know. That's why I was just, was wondering if, if it was a, it'd have to be a significant savings to do that to the residents, but...
So the recycling?
Yep.
I mean, are, are there still volatile numbers that are still bouncing around?
It is vol, it's not as volatile as it was back in twenty twenty when everything dropped out. Um, it's still, there are still items that are fairly good prices and there are still items that are basically, we're breaking even just getting rid of them. With the closure of the mill, I'm not sure if that's going to do anything with any of the stuff that we have been sending up there. I can't even think of the name right now, mill that just closed up in...
Are we still using that?
ND?
Yeah.
M S R A, are we still using?
So I'm not sure, you know, some of our stuff goes to Canada, some of it goes to other out-of-state facilities. It's, it's up and down and we try to hit the high points, but, um...
Are there things that we're taking again now that, 'cause we, at one point, got that notice that you're not...
That we stopped taking stuff, yep.
Stopped taking a bunch of stuff, are we taking that?
There is, we're not, we're still haven't gone back to taking a lot of things we used to take. The one thing that we are currently still taking that's not worth anything is most of the number-one plastics, which is like your salad container-type flimsy plastic stuff. That's, that's not worth anything. But it's hard to tell people that there's certain number-one plastics we'll take, but not the other number-one plastics. So we just kinda sorted ourselves and, and bailed the good stuff together and bailed the bad stuff together.
And the bad stuff goes into the...
And then the bad stuff sits there until there's enough of a market that we break even essentially to get rid of it.
Oh, okay, but it still takes it out of the trash?
It takes it out of the trash thing, so we're saving on the, the MS, MSW hauling, yep.
But still not recycling paper?
What's that?
Still not recycling paper.
Not paper, paper, we take like newspaper and, like, stuff mailing-type paper, advertisements, that's what I was going for. But yes, not paper, paper.
Like newspaper?
Newspaper we'll take, yep.
Office paper?
Like, but office paper we won't.
Like envelopes, that sort of thing? 'Cause there was a lot of envelopes that were contaminating the loads, and that's part of the issue, so...
How's the total amount of recycled goods changed over the last few years? Or the amount of stuff put in wrong categories? Is that, has that been changing in a...
I mean, it's still... So we made a lot, we made some fairly significant changes, and so there's still a learning curve. You know, we're still getting quite a bit of, the biggest thing we get, or the most we get, is cardboard. Probably newspaper is probably second, those are the two things we send out the most. There's still a lot of people putting what's called boxboard in with their cardboard, which is like your soda can boxes and your cereal boxes and that kinda stuff. That's called, um, boxboard, and that's technically not, it's recyclable, but it's not as profitable of a bail if you put the boxboard with the cardboard. And not many mills want it, most of them want just straight cardboard. So I mean, there's still some of that that we pick through, but we, we still have a decent amount of recycling happening.
Yes, I'm just wondering if, if there were a, sort of an educational campaign or collection bins around at businesses or something, you know, some social program telling people how to recycle, could that make a meaningful impact on the overall savings of, of waste management?
I did do a video when we first started, but, um... He wants me to do a YouTube channel, um...
So a dance associated with it?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have pamphlets, like Michelle said, that when we first, you know, there was a pamphlet that went out, and then we still have those pamphlets we put out every year. Most of the, generally, I guess generally speaking, most of the time, that things kind of go a little wonky. I'll say it's in the summer months, when people from out-of-state stay at an Airbnb and they wanna recycle, or... So that's when we see the most usage of those pamphlets. But I mean, it's not a bad thing to reach out to people and do a little reminder-type campaign.
Bring that to the communication committee. That's a great one.
So in prior years, the council had budgeted for like yard cleanup, spring cleanup, sort of thing. Has that been discussed at all?
Uh, we haven't, I have not put any money in for any sort of yard cleanup.
So maybe that would be something that we could talk about at the solid waste committee as well, and bring back to the council, see if there's some interest in that.
I'm not volunteering.
The...
It's pretty expensive, too, yeah.
Right. Right now, I have the five thousand in the special waste disposal. That is generally for the participation with the Hancock County Planning Commission for the hazardous waste cleanup, they generally do every year. And we found that five thousand is right around what we, as a city, are cost for our residents that do take care, or take part in that program.
Yeah, we do do the roadside cleanup.
And we do the roadside cleanup, so every year, like, the green, the green plan helps put together a roadside cleanup in the spring. And we buy the bags, and people volunteer and pick up the roadside trash. And then the highway department goes around and picks up the yellow bags. And we do get rid of those through our transfer station for, for free, essentially.
That's awesome. So it was like, it was a fall cleanup, that we would open up the transfer station? It wasn't for regular trash, but it was for people that wanted to bring couches and tires and all those things that tend to get thrown out by Branch Lake, and those things, we opened it up so residents could bring it and get rid of it for free.
And we don't take that anymore.
We don't take any of that anymore. But DM and J takes most of that for us, outback, and the construction debris.
Yeah.
And while there is a fee associated with it, it's ten dollars for a couch, you know what I mean? Something like that. It's not...
At the end, that's what we did, DM and J.
Yep.
Yep.
We would take what we took, and then we would take them over there, and DM and J would keep track of it and then bill us.
And bill us, yep.
So it was...
And one of the things I'm, wanna talk to the solid waste committee about is there is a potential program through D E P to take what they call universal waste, so TVs, computers, monitors, DVD players, that kinda stuff. And actually, the D E P pays. So we could charge for those items, you know, five dollars for a TV, so it hopefully doesn't end up on the side of the road. And then D E P has a program to help us get rid of those for a very low cost. So it could be a potential, another potential revenue, minor revenue stream. We just have to have a building to store it in. There's, there's some cost to it, and the cost-benefit ratio is something I wanna look at.
That's right.
Cool.
Clean harbors used to help, like, the Rotary Club used to do that? And clean harbors would just take it there, the Rotary Club would get it...
Yeah, they, they can't do it anymore, and I don't remember why something happened, like, the one that used to have at Home Depot?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, something happened, I talked to D E P about it, and I can't remember what, I think the the people that used to do it, not the Rotary, but the, the company, changed something, and they can't do it. I'm not sure, but there was some, something happened in the last couple of years that they haven't been able to do it.
And then also during the household hazardous waste collection, they used to have the universal waste there, too. Has that stopped? Is there a place to even take your TVs anymore?
Uh, really, DM and J generally, they might take it. But yeah, there's not a lot of options for a lot of that stuff around here, which is why I think it's worth us potentially looking at that.
Yeah, that's good, I know, too.
Do you have a highway garage?
Okay, highway garage.
Go back this way.
I think that one is a hundred percent flat funded, if I remember correctly, so that one should be quick, hopefully.
Just so you all know, we're gonna skip over the parks, trees, and cemeteries, because we're still waiting on some numbers for another company to do some landscaping, so we won't touch on that part of this budget tonight.
Yeah, it looks like that's what funded from last year.
Actually...
Let me help you.
It's in the same section.
Yeah. There we go.
Well, power's down, but...
Power's down, but we put the, um, building, maintenance, and repair up. We need to, we want to use that money to make a, like, a locker room-type thing to keep all the guys' safety apparel dust-free and such. It used to be the, the front office area for the, um, the foreman. The office now is in the back, and so we're taking that office out, and we wanna make a clean space for them to keep all their coats and safety gear. And that's it.
Moving right along.
That was a good one.
So highway department. We're gonna start with the, the kicker. We're gonna jump down to the salt budget, which I incorrectly put that FY twenty-three was one fifty-five, 'cause I believe it was actually one seventy-five that was budgeted, I believe. And I, when we put this, when I put this budget together, it was looking fairly good for our salt numbers, and then winter decided to show up. So currently, we're at over a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars worth of salt. So part of that is not because we're using more, it's because the cost of salt from, not this past winter, but the winter before, to this, to this current winter, went up by twenty-five dollars a ton. It was fifty-something a ton, and it went up to seventy-nine dollars a ton. Um, so we're actually using less salt, it just costs us more money to get it.
So are you increasing that line item?
I would like to bring it back up to one seventy-five.
Where does it come from, the salt?
Um, we are getting it through New England Salt. We put out a bid every August usually, to various salt vendors, and they were all, well, I think we got a couple of responses, but they were all in that general range. We also, this year, are looking into, so many moons ago, or many years ago, the Hancock County Planning Commission used to do like kind of a bulk order for the county, but when they went defunct, that kinda stopped. So we have had to put our own bid out the last five years for salt. And we were doing fairly well. This past winter, that, that we're, this current winter that we're in, is the first year where the main state contract was less than ours, but you have to sign up for it way in advance. So we are actually getting in this year to find out what the state contract number is. There's no, you don't have to take it, it's just, you give them how much tonnage you think you'll need, they give you the number, then you decide whether you want to take their number or get your own. So we are gonna see what the state number is this year, and potentially go that route if we think there'll be some savings there.
Do they go out to bid early enough that you can jump on another bid?
They, I have to have my number into them by April, and they'll have the response back by May, so...
Yeah, it's never been less, we always did better on our own.
We always did better on our own, and this year, for the first time ever, was, it wasn't a lot cheaper, but I think it was like two or three dollars cheaper. So I'm hoping that maybe salt will come down this year. And not this winter, but the last winter, there was kind of a salt shortage. And so I think maybe some companies were scared that it would happen again this year. And so the dollar, you know, the cost was kinda inflated. I'm hoping it maybe comes back down a little bit, but we'll see.
Who knew, salt market?
So yeah, so that was the biggie, is requesting to add, take that back up to one seventy-five. The other increase, I will say, in payroll is that we are requesting an additional staff member. We requested one last year, along with police and fire, they each got one, we did not. So I'm requesting again this year an additional staff member. A lot of it, payroll, other than the additional staff member, is contractual through the union, as is stipends, the on-call pay. And I think the rest of it, gasoline and fuel, just bumped that up based on some of the current gas prices compared to previous years. Sand and gravel, you'll notice in my write-up requesting an additional staff member, one of the things, because we've been so busy with the multitude of other things, one of the things we have not had much time in, or time to do, is making our own gravel at our gravel pit. We just haven't had someone that we can commit to the pit long-term to make gravel. So we've been buying gravel from various contractors, sometimes, not all the times, as needed. I bumped the sand and gravel number up to have, um, we hire, when we have the salt sand screened in the fall, I would like to also have, or we, I guess Adams is in on this, too. We would like to have some gravel screened also, so that we have a gravel stockpile. Uh, it won't be enough for the whole year, but it'll get us something to work with. Hopefully supplement, um, what we haven't had time to do. I think that's really the bulk of the changes.
Can I ask a question about the pit?
Yeah.
Do we have a deadline for when we're gonna use up that pit, or...
I think we got plenty of time. So I know back in a while ago, Woodard and Curran told you you only had a few years left.
Yeah.
But we have line agreements with Lane Construction and, holy Moses, Atherton Construction.
That's right.
On the other side of us, the line agreements allows us to take everything right up to the line instead of having to have ten-foot setbacks.
Ten-foot setbacks.
So it opened up access to a lot more gravel, and we can still go down quite a bit. So I don't see it being done in my tenure here, honestly.
When I visited, somebody over there said, "Your grandchildren will still be using this gravel."
Yeah.
To me.
Yeah.
I don't even have children yet.
My rental is going away, but...
Well, and then on top of that is, we haven't even gotten into the part of the pit where if, if we spend the stuff that, in the area where we're working now, there's the whole area towards the cemetery where the road to Lane's pit is, that we would have to reroute their road, but then we could, could start using, you know, mining that area, so... I think we're in good shape.
Do you suspect the additional staffer will lower the overall overtime? Or will there still be enough work for that new person and...
I think the idea is there will be some savings in overtime, especially during like snowstorms. An additional staffer would allow us to break up some of the plow routes. There are some significantly long plow routes out there. So by having an additional staffer, it would allow us to have an additional plow route, which would make cleanup quicker, and hopefully mean less of those additional hours after the storm stops. Obviously, they're all gonna be out there during the storm, but...
Do we have enough equipment for that?
What's that?
Do we have enough equipment for that?
Uh, yep.
Really? We have extra plow trucks?
We do.
One spare, and we just have one spare.
Well, we have a spare plow truck and a spare wheeler. We have an extra single axle and an extra wheeler.
So if anyone breaks down, we'd have to, yeah?
If, if, even if we had an additional staffer, and that broke down, we still have one more. We would have one more spare truck. Yep.
Trucks never break down. Like, when it storms, move.
Well, it wouldn't be the first time we use one ton to plow roads when we have to. It's, you do what you gotta, right? So...
But there's also, I mean, there's a memo in there, but there's also other areas of savings by adding this additional staff person. Currently, we contract for the Water Street Parking Lot to be plowed in the wintertime because of staffing shortages. So we could do away with that contract by adding an additional person. Sidewalks have continued, you know, continue to be a concern of the community and a complaint of the community. Additional staff person will enable us to attack those much quicker, so that we can, you know, open up the sidewalks and get pedestrians to be able to utilize those more quickly. There's also a lot of conversation about the trail and a need for, as we expand the trail, with DOT, a requirement that that trail be maintained year-round. We've never maintained the trail that's currently in existence, but should we be required to by the DOT to do that, that's gonna be an additional responsibility that we're gonna need to, most, mostly plowing will be the biggest part.
Say, we have to plow it?
Yes.
Plow it, yeah.
Yep, and if we're gonna plow the new section, we might as well plow the old section.
Well, it's supposed to be plowed anywhere, right? But we haven't?
Well, that's the discussion, or the debate.
There's some gray area. Somewhere, there's a gray area.
Cross-country ski across it.
Right, well, and that's it, but if we talk to the DOT guy who's in charge of trails, he says that maintenance, which is what we agreed to do, includes snow maintenance. But because it was a gray area, and now that there's federal funds in it, they basically said it, you have to be ADA, like, it has to be an ADA path. And to be ADA, it has to be maintained in the winter.
So those poor people that wanna snowshoe and cross-country ski along it are just out of luck?
They're out of, they'll have to go out to the city forests, yep.
And it's pretty hard to snowshoe up there, but we'll snow ski.
I think Mike would like to see it plowed. So he can walk on it and not get his blushes wet.
So I've gotten a few emails about, um, trash at Nolton Park, so it would help with that kinda stuff.
Well, it depends on what you're talking about, yes. So, um, the trash downtown in Nolton Park during the summertime is growing exponentially, I'm not really sure why. Well, I do, you know, people have birthday parties and such out there, and they shove pizza boxes in there. Well, that fills up the trash can, you know, in two seconds versus taking the pizza boxes home, you know what I mean? you know, in two seconds versus taking the pizza boxes home. You know what I mean? But, um, so yeah, I mean, we pick up the trash as it is, generally Monday, Wednesday, Friday, um, sometimes more often. Um, if you're referring to trash during the wintertime, we still would plan to not have trash cans out there during the winter. They're just not accessible. Um, you know, the pass get ice, the paths get ice covered and then the trash sits out there for the raccoons and the mice and the whatever until we can get out there and it becomes more of a hazard, then it's.
But isn't the problem that trash is being left out there anyway?
The idea is that if there's not trash cans, people should take their trash with them is the, the theory. Um, same thing happened at the harbor. It would be overflowing in the winter. Or because, you know, in the wintertime, we used to have the trash containers out there and we, we bolted them shut in the winter. Well, people then just leave their trash next to it. No, but we took the whole container out and now they don't do that.
Is that what you did at Nolton Park too, then?
The contain, most of them, yes.
We just removed them completely.
Completely removed them.
Put their trash near them.
I also, so just real quickly, I think it's important, and again, you have this in your book, but for the public to recognize that the last new position with the Highway Department was in two thousand and twelve. And since then, they've taken on a lot of additional responsibilities throughout the, throughout the city. And they really are the, they're the kind of the catch-all when there's a responsibility or something that needs to get done and nobody's, does it? We call the Highway Department and say, hey, can you guys go do X? Can you guys go do Y and Z? And without fail, they always manage to, you know, to rise to the occasion and get the work done. So I think, um, adding, you know, adding a staff person to, to what is a very valuable department for the city is, um, is definitely a worthwhile expenditure.
And since two thousand and twelve, we've had some additional roads as well that we needed to maintain.
We've had additional roads that the city have taken over, yep.
Additional sidewalks.
More sidewalks, additional parks, um, you know, we used to hire out the mowing at Nolton Park. Now the Highway Department does that. Um, so, like I said, there's the memo in there, but it's, it's, you know, the Christmas tree up and down, the the parklet up and down, the pride banners up and down, the flags up and down multiple times. It's all a bunch of little things that seem like it's not a big deal, but it's all things that has to be scheduled in and, and requires multiple people. And when you take multiple people away from a department, that leaves less people to do some of the bigger projects. And so you gotta play that balance of what I call the aesthetics of the city with the function of the roads.
Two, question and a comment, personal vehicle use, going home with, well, city vehicles. How many people in this department do that?
Um, so two from the Highway Department and then myself. My vehicle is funded by water, wastewater and the Water Department.
So there's three.
That'd be my, so myself, the foreman and the crew leader. Because in the summertime, or in the wintertime, the crew leader and the foreman split road duty, what we call, we call it road duty. So they split getting up at two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning to check the roads to see if they need to call the rest of the crew in. So they each have a vehicle for that, um, as well as the call-in in the middle of a rainstorm or a windstorm, or, um, we had the bridge wash, or not wash out, the bridge, uh, not collapse, but
Sinkhole.
Sinkhole in the bridge to the public forest and, you know, they respond, day, night, weekend. They're responding.
I think there's a lot of departments that it's hard to measure and see what they do.
Yep.
But on a winter's morning, um, you can see what the Highway Department does very easily.
Especially a line right there.
Right, and, and it's amazing to me what the City of Ellsworth accomplishes during a, a snow event or whatever you wanna call it. Because you can see, um, the difference between neighboring towns and Ellsworth. Um, I slide out of my driveway at five in the morning and I live on the back road of one eighty and it's always plowed wide. It's, it's an amazing service that they do. Um, and I, uh, everybody needs a round of applause for that. And it's something you can see. You know, you can't, you, you can't see the culvert you put in or the water in the culvert, but, uh, that's snow. Um, and that job, uh, it's the worst job on the planet, but yet they do a great job doing it. And it's, it's a, it's a great service.
We are very lucky to have a very dedicated crew.
I also wanted to add, I know that we did a comparison one time, the City of Brewer has very competitive amount of lane miles that the City of Ellsworth has. And they have, what, six more people that work in their Public Works Department than the City of Ellsworth does.
It, it's just amazing. They have no life in the winter, right?
Very little. It's, it's the highway family in the winter.
Ah, there you go.
Unless they're ice fishing.
Unless they're ice fishing.
And they're also, I don't know if this changed a little bit, but taking vacation in the wintertime is.
It's, it's minimal.
Right.
Um, we don't prohibit it, but most of them are cognizant of their job to maintain the roads and, you know, they, some of them do, but it's one at a time. It's not multiple user.
So with this extra person also, that'll help with the backlog of, of people that are taking all their vacation in the middle of the summer.
Or, you know, we've had multiple times where we've had illnesses during the winter. Un- unpredictable, or, you know, unforeseen illnesses in the winter. And so that puts us down a plow guy for the majority of the winter or all of the winter.
Last winter, we were down three, right?
The last winter, we were down three.
And of course, no truck breaks down when the guys are down.
All right. I think that's it, right?
That's it for you tonight.
Perfect.
All we got left is water and
Reggie.
Reggie. And Reggie is gonna address his capital because he is not available for the capital budget workshop later, sorry, in April, so.
Good evening. I'm the Water Department's superintendent, Reggie Williams. Um, do you wanna do the capital first or go through the plan?
Start with your regular.
Okay.
That's section twelve in your books.
So the payroll, I just calculated up everybody's hourly wage and that's the number I put in. I did not account for any COLA increase or anything like that. Um, electricity is down ten thousand, um, to solar credits. Chemicals have had a slight decrease. The materials and supplies, that's down a little bit. Um, I shifted some things around in my line items um, to put them in a more appropriate place. Contract services and engineering, that's Woodard and Curran or any outside entity that gives us a hand with anything we should need. Uh, contract services, I would be hiring contractors to come in and do work as needed if the Highway Department isn't available to dig for us. Vehicle maintenance has increased due to fuel. Um, we have the office rental now, which is new. And the miscellaneous expenses has increased due to needing more training for new employees and things like that.
Here Reggie, looking back at the material supplies, why is that so much higher than it was in like two thousand twenty-one or in two thousand twenty? The six-two-zero-one-zero material supplies, ninety-five thousand nine hundred. Last year you budgeted a hundred thousand. Um, it just seems like a lot more than, I don't know what the two thousand twenty-two actuals.
Yeah, so, um, last year we had a lot of leaks. Um, so I budgeted for, and we had contractors come in and, and do that work. Um, so we also had a lot of pavement that needed to be paved in. Our leaks were during the wintertime, so.
Okay. And that comes out of that line item then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, what we've experienced Reggie, I think is a direct, it's a direct, uh, result of an aging, a lot of aging water mains.
Oh, exactly, yep.
And so, uh, we, we anticipate that like this last year, we had several breaks.
I think seven total.
And we're anticipating that we can expect to have several more because many of those water mains are.
And is that why the contract services have gone up if you look over five years too? It's that same stuff, stuff that needs to get fixed.
I find that I'm spending more and more money, just little bits here and there to, to even just maintain the plant as needed.
Wanna go over your revenues?
Revenues. So revenues are, are down compared to last year. And, and I honestly do not have an answer as to why. Um, we just had a rate increase take effect January of this year. And now Tony, is the, are those numbers estimated to finish up the year?
Based on what we've been taking in, yeah.
Okay. So, um, with the rate increase and jacks mainly, they are taking a lot more water. Um, that number should actually be a lot higher. Or I assume will be higher, but just basing it on what we've taken in already and estimating that forward, it's, it's hard to tell what, what we're gonna get.
And the new development that Mike talked about in his budget would be?
Yes, so that will all come into effect also.
I think they will be higher, but, um, when I spoke to Amanda, that does the water billing. Um, and you may remember from when you both were working here. I think Amanda said like in April, it's all the public fire is always billed in April. And so with the rate change taking effect in January, I don't have a whole year of data to look. You know what I mean? To compare. It's because it's quarter by quarter.
Yeah.
So I don't really have a lot to look at, but that's based on what we're taking in currently for this last fiscal year. I don't know that we're gonna hit those FY twenty-three budgeted numbers based on that. But again, without having more, more billing cycles with that rate change, I, I just don't know.
Right, and that FY twenty-three number was an estimate based on, I believe, a fifteen percent rate increase.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Twelve and a half?
Yeah.
So although our rate increase was higher than twelve and a half, but if we didn't capture some of the major expenses before that rate increase, then that would explain why the estimation's gonna be off.
And we've reduced the amount that the city pays for the public fire protection, even though we have a rate increase?
I thought that went out to like five hundred thousand.
Yeah, they should have got that.
Yeah, so that needs to be adjusted. So that would mean that you didn't have a loss, it'd be a decrease.
Yep, that would be more.
This says three seventy.
I'll double check it.
Okay.
What's non-metered revenue?
Uh, so anybody who will say, uh, somebody comes in with a, a truck that has a two-hundred-and-fifty gallon tank and they wanna fill it, we charge them for the two-hundred-and-fifty gallons. It's not metered. Yeah, bulk water sales. The bulk water.
All those swimming pools we have in Ellsworth.
Yeah, so there are, there's one customer in particular that, I mean, she has a hydrant right in front of her house and her pool is fifty feet away. We just, we hook it up and, and just fill it.
We charge it for it.
Yeah, they do.
How much is that for the pool?
What's that?
What's it cost for the pool?
So there's a sixty-five dollar flat rate fee that is just a, a meter hookup fee or just for us to show up and and hook it up. And then it's just based on whatever the rates are for a two-inch meter. We just
Residential or commercial?
Residential.
Is this where the money also goes for, um, the fifty dollars we charge quarterly for the backflow? Is that backflow for dinner? Is that, is that miscellaneous? Okay.
Any questions on the operating budget?
I have a comment that I, a little bit of, uh, background I've been able to find. It seems that your department malls right along and pays for itself and doesn't have big losses and, and such.
We, we hold pretty steady.
Yeah, it, it's, it's amazing and, and I applaud you for that and I, I appreciate the the very minor increase in your expenses.
Yep.
So just so you know, this is all from the city. That's the difference to why we're using.
Well, um, that's fine and it's not, this isn't use, that's capacity.
Public fire protection.
And, um, but you seem to mull along and, and, um, seem to carry yourself. And, uh, I, I really appreciate that. And secondly, I'd like to ask about personal vehicle use.
Yep.
How many?
So, uh, there's one for me. Um, I take nuts every day. And then I have my on-call person. Um, so I have four people. So whoever is on-call for that week, they take a vehicle home as well.
So there's two vehicles, but it's spread over four people, the second vehicle.
It's good water too, high quality.
High quality, H two O.
Makes good beer.
And I will give you a schedule for the flushing.
Thank you.
Makes good beer, it does make good beer.
Flushing water, maybe not.
All right, so you wanna, if there's no other questions about his operation budget, we'll have him touch base on his capital.
Just a few pages down.
Yep.
Thank you.
Keep going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, that's what I'm gonna read. Um, are the replacements to me or are they in addition to?
These?
Oh, okay, so you increased in the request by this?
Yep.
Okay.
So where are you in the bank?
Section fifteen and he's got the last two, should be the last two pages or so.
So I will, uh, we'll go over what Tony just handed you first. So, uh, the VFDs, uh, our raw water pumps now currently run off from a soft start and it, that is exactly what it, it's in the name. Um, we have a hundred-and-twenty-five horsepower pumps that the soft starts reduce the load on startup. So it doesn't take all three-hundred-and-eighty volts or whatever it is to start the pump. It, it gradually speeds the pump up. Um, I am looking to replace those soft starts with VFDs, which will do the same thing as the soft starts, but with an added benefit of actually being able to control the pump speed itself. I've noticed that with the new pump that came in, um, and then also along with the, the old existing pump, that our backwash process, the guys have to, they go in our lab, they start the backwash, they have to run out into the filter room and they have to squeeze. So, and what is happening is the backwash is going too hard. It is mixing the filter media, so the, the coarse material is ending up in the fine material and we're not getting a good filtration, we're not getting a good backwash. It's not being done properly. So by adding in the VFDs, we can control that and, and save our filter media from being pumped out into the windows. So the estimated cost to go from soft start to VFD for both 125 horsepower pumps is 37,800. There is an added 5% if an inline reactor is needed. The cost of that is 7,250. Um, and the, the budget request, I totaled those together just in case we needed it to bring it to the 45,050 dollars. And the gentleman who is installing these is the guy who does all of our pump work as it is now.
I, uh, I switched to VFDs for my much, much smaller pumps that I use, but they're much more energy efficient. Is it the same case?
Same thing, yep. Yeah, same process.
It should stay on the wear and tear of the pumps, yeah. Instead of the on, off, on, off. It lets it ramp up and ramp down.
And they're quiet too, right?
It's a floating.
They're not now, but, yeah, so the, the VFDs get, it can, we can set it so the pump, the plant will actually run 24/7. Instead of, so right now, it runs, it fills our tank, the plant shuts down. That also causes wear and tear on the pumps, it causes wear and tear on our UV system. Um, the UV system should actually be just steady on until it needs maintenance. Um, and then also when it shuts down, it'll actually ramp the pump down slowly instead of just shutting off and creating a surge within the system. Any questions on that? Okay, so the next thing I have is to replace a 2013 full drive-through quarter ton plow and liftgate. Um, my request is to replace it with the same thing. My plan is to keep the existing plow, so the only thing we'll need to do for that is have the appropriate mounting gear added to the truck. Um, so I, the cost of the, a liftgate, lights and plow, I've estimated to 62,000, so that's for truck and everything. I have 4,500 in here to pay for half of the watershed boat. And the trench box, um, our current trench box is pretty old and beat up. Um, it is no longer legal, uh, we should not be using it. Um, so I've put 12,000 in and this, we are actually going to request safety grant money through the Ed McMahon office.
I just missed that last thing that you said.
Uh, so the, the city works with MMA, they have an Ed, Ed McMahon, uh, safety grant. Um, so we can actually put this in, if we get approved, we'll get back 2,500?
Is it half?
Up to 3,000.
Yeah, so we'll, if we approve it, we would still have to approve it through the capital thing.
Yes.
But then you might get reimbursed.
Right.
Some of it. I thought you said 25,000.
No, it's 2,500.
Oh, 2,500, oh.
Every little bit.
So based on those numbers that you just went through for the capital, that changes the CIP number at the beginning to?
123,550.
I have 119050 because.
I have 119 too.
Okay.
Um, well, it's because of the 4,500, which really isn't capital because it should be in your operating.
Yeah.
Is it in your oper?
Well, the 4,500 is half of what we just vote, which is.
And, and John has a whole request for the full 12,000.
Oh, so there's part in part.
It's part and part, but it's just all on John's sheet, which is more in the middle of your.
Okay.
Capital section.
That makes sense.
I can break it out on that front sheet just so that it's easier.
Yeah, cause, um, I got trench box, equipment truck and what was the other?
VFDs.
Which is 4,5050. So how much, 122?
123, 550.
550, okay.
That was quiet.
Yes.
I don't, I don't wanna question anything, cause you have a, a great frugal attempt and, and your frugality is appreciated. I just, I wanna talk a little bit about this new pickup truck.
Yep.
Okay? Um, and I'm not trying to spend more money here, but I just would like to question putting a liftgate and a plow off a 10-year-old truck onto a new one.
Oh, so the, the, well, the plow I just had rebuilt. Um, so the plow is, itself is in excellent shape. The liftgate that is on the truck now, um, it, it's only a few years old, but it's, it was a cheap liftgate, um, and it's in pretty rough shape. So that will go with the truck when it leaves.
So.
My plan is to buy a new liftgate for the new truck.
Oh, it says it's gonna use an existing plow and liftgate. That's why I was questioning.
Okay, yeah, no, the, the liftgate will not go with the, it will go with.
You're gonna put a new liftgate on this?
Yes.
And, and you don't think it makes sense to put a new plow on this new truck?
At this point, no. So this plow, it's our secondary plow. Um, I do the majority of the plowing for the Water Department. Um, I've got a brand-new plow on a brand-new truck. It's a heavier truck, it's a bigger plow.
Leaving the plow on the old one doesn't gain the resale value?
I don't know. I just didn't wanna spend the money to get.
No, and I appreciate that very much. I just wanted to make sure we wasn't, um, buying a new truck and putting a problem on it.
Right, no, now the plaque said the plow just got rebuilt, so it's.
Okay.
Fisher's gone, all through it already, or Vanguard truck went through the whole entire thing.
Okay. And again, I'm not picking at your frugality.
Yeah, no.
I appreciate it. Don't, don't tell anybody.
Right, yeah. So that is a, this is just brought up another point, so they're both Fisher plows, they're both V plows, so if need be, we can swap plows around on trucks.
Trucks, yeah, okay. All right. So you've got a way out of a jam then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Would this be a truck that you give to the Highway Department or?
No, probably not.
Okay, all right.
It's.
Usually they'll take the, the leftovers.
I wanna say it's getting to, close to 140,000 miles and it, it needs some body work. Um, Highway did some major bodywork to it a couple of years ago and even that's starting to, to come through again, so. It would make somebody a graveyard truck.
Don't give it away when they tell you they'll give you 2,500 bucks.
No.
I mean.
You could sell it to somebody you know.
Well, no, I mean seriously, go buy one. They're all rust buckets, they're rust buckets and they're getting 10, 12,000 bucks for them, so.
Yep.
When they offer you 2,500 bucks, it's just a slap when you're spending 60.
Right.
Any more questions for Reggie?
I'd just like to say thank you for the frugal.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Frugal budget.
Still learning, but I'm, I'm getting everything.
Okay, that's the last budget for this evening.
Thank you all.
Before we wrap it up, I do just wanna make an announcement that due to Counselor inavailability tomorrow, we will not be having a Finance Committee meeting in the morning. And with that, unless Counselors have anything?
I'll be missing the next two budget on the third and the sixth. Apologies.
That's okay, I missed the first two, so.
Yeah, me too, so.
You can watch it.
I will, I'll watch it.
Um, so you probably need some signatures.
Adam, do you still have just one maintenance person that works on your vehicles at the garage?
Okay. And are you around? I have some questions.
Oh, really?
Thanks Reggie.
About.
Oh.